I'll order the special meeting of the Moni Billings Board. May 7th, 2014, the time is now 6:10. If you would, please, from the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
George, please.
Starts off trustee Graham, the person who will be attending the meeting.
Sure.
It's Alice.
Here.
Lauren.
Here.
Pearson.
Who?
Pearson, oh, okay, I'm sorry. Austin. Austin, cancel. Pop.
Here.
Brace it.
Right. Okay. Open to the public agenda items only. Any tickers? Okay. Next. We have several items on the agenda after the, in that area. We have discussion of village finances, discussion of water rate, and the special, or the public town hall basically meeting that's going to take place on the 14th. So, I'm going, I'm going to ask the board if their preference would be, since we have that pending sooner, do we want to address the water issue first in case we run out of time again? And then because finances, we can keep talking about that and keep reviewing that, but I just, I just want to, what's the board's preference? I want to make sure that we get through the things that are most port, you know, most time sensitive of the field.
My question would be to Mr. Batista and Mr. Crizell, are we ready to do that? You feel me? Yeah? Okay.
So, would you guys like to go ahead and address that to make sure we get that covered? So, let's go to item number F, discussion of the water department rates in preparation for the public discussion on May 14th. So, gentlemen?
We were told currently the microphone is not working, so for those of you in the audience that can't hear.
Here, let's do this. Can you guys take it over here?
Okay, good evening.
That one doesn't work. Time for some new microns.
Okay, at the last meeting, we handed out to the board packet and went over Richson Park's study of surrounding communities and gave you a flat rate of, what their rate was per the first 1,000 gallons. And you can see, if you're looking at that list, Moni is at the bottom of the list. And going back in the village ordinance, back to, I believe it was 1990, actually, I think 93 is when the legis, when the ordinance was first prepared. And the 280 was actually signed into ordinance as the, the flat rate. Since 93, 21 years, we've been at the same rate. Obviously, there's been many changes into the, in the water department over the years, over the last 21 years. 10 years ago or so, 11 years ago, new, a water tower was put up, which was in the area of about 1.3 million. There's been other infrastructures, more employees that have been hired, equipment and so forth. But also, we've had more regulations placed on the water department in the village by EPA. There's EPA requirements that we have to adhere to. And with those new, with those requirements and very strict guidelines, there had to be measures put in place to make sure the water was there where it was supposed to be according to the guidelines. And this is all taken money, so we would propose before the board that we would, that there would be a rate increase. And we've talked about it in, looking at it, we've left it in your packet, there is also a bill, there's a couple of bills there you can look at with the flat fee. It's an 1155 fee, and that is for the first 4,000 gallons. And we would, we would offer a proposer to the board to consideration of raising that rate, $3. And then our flat rate of 280, we've also have talked about a rate increase at 7% and then 4% over the next few years as long as the board sees fit. This would not take care of the problem. This would not bring the village up to where it needs to be. But it would place us somewhere in the middle of this rate on page number five. If you look at, at the Richson Park study, it would put us somewhere in the middle of that.
Trustee, you have a comment? Can I repeat those numbers, please? What, is there a page on here specifically you were referring to?
If you look at the bill, there, there was three bills that were placed in there. There was Moni Bills. And you'll see in that Moni bill, you'll see the rates that are there. And there is an 1155 rate.
Right, I'll go.
There's also a cap and maintenance fee as well. So, it's those fees that we would ask the board to consider raising those rates. And DJ can fill you a little bit more in the details of why we would ask for those increases.
The minimum bill currently right now is 6847, and that encompasses the first 4,000 gallons used. So, as most of our minimum bills come in for water users that are less, it, after that charge, an increment of $2.80 per thousand comes in after the first 4,000 used. So, as the flat rate, we would like to increase that to make it about 73, no, I'm sorry, retract that, 7147 for a minimum bill. It would raise the base water rate for the first 4,000 gallons used, $3. So, the minimum bill would be 7147.
Which may I say, if you don't mind, Mr. Crizell, that that still puts us way down as far as the other communities.
Yeah.
So, we're not trying to sting everyone, if I may use that word. We're trying to rectify something that hasn't happened in 21 years. I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. It's all right.
The, the water rate after the first 4,000 would go up 7%. That would put us at $3 per thousand. And then recommending a 4% annual increase, 10 years is a good number, God bless you. If you have an issue where you want that shorter to review, bless you, we can always adjust that. That's at your discretion. But it would help us to get our rate of water per thousand in line with the actual costs of water. That number fluctuates currently right now, as Ruben explained. EPA drives this mandate as well as infrastructure improvements in there. Since that time, this board distinguished panel had approved the purchase of some water system equipment that would help us read, be a little more efficient while we were out there. So, over the last two years, we've been replacing meters. All this cost is absorbed by the water department currently. And with our water rate not being touched for the last, as Ruben stated, 21 years, which I think it, you know, states that with other increases and other communities having minimum water bills and having water rate increases, we've kind of geared the other communities to take that structure. This doesn't improve our water quality. This just helps us to be able to supply the water and meet the EPA guidelines. I can tell you that because over the last couple of years, I've picked up testing a lot more frequently and flushing, the water quality, the quality of water has gone up over the last year and a half, two years. And we've done tower maintenance that hadn't been done with currently this esteemed panel authorization to clean the exterior of the tower that had never been done. That all comes money right out of the water system. We're proposing more improvements in the future. So, as we get this locked down, narrowed down, we'll be able to put us in a better position as the years follow. We can line this up as the water, water rate increase goes into effect with the garbage rate increase. It can kind of just be one steady increase on the bill at one time to not shock the residents. There'll be other adjustments that we'll have to make to the sanitary side of it, but we're not talking about sanitary right now. We're just talking about the water delivery system. And we can get in that to a later date. But right now, we're just talking about raising the first, the rate of water to produce water. And I'll take any questions from the people here at this point.
I just have a couple, and I guess they're like generalities though. Of all these listed, all the, like, this amount of members in here and their rates, which one or which ones closely, you know, like resemble us that have their own water supply? And which ones are Chicago water?
Sure, I can address that if you'd like. Page two on that form shows you which water sources come from that have their own wells versus which water source members have Lake Michigan water. And it states real easy, real quick. A lot of the bills that I have compiled from the area were from systems with well. I just, I did pull a little bit of some of the other communities as to what they were paying for Chicago water or Aqua water. But on page two, under this water source members, it tells you who has a well currently featured. Crete, Moni, Park Forest, Richson Park, Suck Village, Stager, and University Park all operate out of a well.
Sorry, I didn't see that, DJ.
That's not a problem. On the next page, it tells you the frequency of billing, bi-monthly, monthly, quarterly. We, we fit under the bi-monthly category. So, in doing so, that bi-monthly bill will really only affect the base water rate $1.50 per month for an overall $3 increase. And that's minimal, and that's a recommendation. This board can always, you know, elevate that or lower that as it sees fit. But we are trying to set this up progressively. During that time, we can also incorporate a base water rate increase to fluctuate with the water rate increase, but it won't be that heavy, you know, 7% that we get taxed to add $3 to the base water rate.
You said that 4% annual increase you're, you're performing or you're recommending after the initial 7% increase?
It's your, yeah, it's your, their.
After, after 4,000 gallon, the usage per thousand would increase 4%. It's the recommendation that we're making. It's minimal on $3 if we jump our base rate up to it. And then over the years, if we do a 10-year structure, I believe that's what most of the other communities do on our bi-monthly billing, that 10-year structure. I believe the most we figured out, we would get a rate increase was 10 cents at the year 10 is what it would end up going, you know. Ultimately, the first years of the 4% increase on $3, I believe, worked out to a rate, roughly rate around 6% or 6 or 7 cents. And then we just go up progressively every year. I believe 2015 at $3, 2016, $3.11, 2017, $3.22. So, progressively kind of go up every year. And I don't have the exact numbers, but before we present this for a final sign-off, we'll have it drafted so that you can see in more of a readable ordinance format you guys can agree to.
So, at the end of 10 years, are we going to be out of that? They get the cash flow?
Probably not. The EPA drives that. But what I can promise you is the way water is done is, is a constant, ever-evolving thing. So, we may have to make adjustments. We'll just have to see as that time comes. The EPA really drives and mandates that. So, every year when we attend our Springfield conference, it's a great way to network out with the Legals and how EPA is driving the mandates for the potable water supply systems. It's a really good networking tool to try to see wastewater infiltration, stormwater infiltration, underground infiltration at any given time, because we do have our own aquifer, not to send any alarms, but that can change to where we have to test differently or test more frequently or provide, you know, some other means of filtering that at this point, we don't have any plan for. We, we have numbers for that if you want to do that, but it's up for around 4.4 billion to start, you know, removing lead and treating that.
I wonder if it would be, if we could or if it would be a good idea for the board here to put a line item in called, let's say, EPA regulations so people can see. You say it's always evolving and they're changing policies and so forth. That people can see that this is how much you're paying for EPA regulations on things. It's not going to the village because we want to stick it to the people. We, because we're, we have to be in compliance.
Sure. It's a good point. And what I can say is since that is not a chargeable line item thing that we usually can associate with a line item, what I can do is since we have our brand-new website under the water department, I can provide an EPA link. And then we can update changes as the EPA comes to it. I can put it in our notes. And then we can just provide useful tips and links so that if there's ways for general public to put their input into any mandated EPA, usually they reach out to residents, constituents, people that have a say-so in that, they can voice their opinion. And if it's something that seems a little out of reach, they can voice their opinion. So, as we update our website and develop it, over the next recent months, we can, we can add an EPA link in. That will help be able to steer the resident if they have any questions pertaining to that.
I might say that, just to comment on all this, the amount of money taken in for the village does not cover any maintenance or anything with our pump stations. And since I've been on board as a trustee, we did have one go down. And of course, the pipe, what was that, Mr. Crizell? 200 and some feet below the ground? 10-foot lengths of cast iron pipe had to be pulled out of the ground because the bottom one was broken. And that was a over $30,000 cost. And we had to come up with money for it because we do not get enough revenue to cover that. So, there's, there's a lot of good reasons to raise our rate. I mean, 21 years. I mean, that's, that's the very first thing that stands out. You know, why that happened? I can't answer that, you know. This just came about from us talking about having a rate increase and we found out all these different factors, so.
And as he stated, that is a very good point. My background is more proactive than reactive when it comes to maintenance. So, because I yearly test our wells, our well pump motors, we're starting to, because I've now achieved my C-class water operator's license and have gone through the schooling, did it on weekends on my own time, and achieved that goal and a little more knowledge in that, have been able to know what we should be doing that wasn't done in years past. So, just as far as a maintenance aspect for our guys, as you know, we just got a new guy in the water department approved. It would help, it'll help to be able to plan for a failure. We'll be able to track how the pump and the well is, is running to be able to program it. And it looks like this year, because of the way the wells operating, we may need to program it and repair. Or as before, it was more reactive. They would show up one day and the well would've broken. So, because we're starting to do more well maintenance, that is all bringing this price up. And again, it's more of a proactive. When we see the tower being cleaned, when we see wells being tested, you know, meters being tested to make sure that what the wells metering are calculated to what the chemicals are that we're feeding, that was never done in the past. In fact, well three never had a meter that you could actually test and dial in until I took over. So, all these improvements, just to make sure that the residents get the right amount of treated water to the homes at the farthest points. It, it all takes money that in the past was never really spent. So, now is a good time to plan for the future.
I have to say that I know a lot of these facts from sitting in with some meetings and going over these water things for quite a while. And we even have valves that we know have not been executed for years and years. And it's a positive that when some of them are executed, we're going to have to replace them. If we run into a trouble with a leak, we'll wind up putting in a new shut-off valve, which means more work. So, we have many numerous problems within the water system. The water is, I hear no one talking about deodorant anymore. That's a wonderful thing. I used to, oh my God, I wouldn't want to take a shower. I thought I was taking a shower and whatever the odor was. Anyway, there's many factors within the system that need to be addressed that aren't. David really can't go out, Mr. Crizell, and execute these things because he's going to cost us money. So, it's, it's a hit and miss thing. If we have a problem, he's going to have to execute it. And he's always on a hope and a prayer that it's not going to blow up or who knows what, you know, and they have to replace it. I'm just throwing that out too for you so that you understand that the need for this. And we're not talking, she was the board, we're not talking about tremendous increase, but we do have a little bit of an increase and then a gradual work also.
So, and this will bring up something that I know it's just a discussion, but I'll bring it up again. And I know that you and I, you have talked about this ad nauseam, is about a water ban ordinance, you know, to help, you know, fray the cost, defray the cost for the residents, perhaps if we had that. And I know you and I talked and you said that this is the only thing that, you know, basically we're, the village is making money on. Well, now we know we're not. But I think that would actually help if people were given a reason to help save that water, you know, and doing it just, you know, watering every other day kind of thing by their address, like most villages around here, that might help them think about that $3, you know, increase. It won't hurt so bad too, because they'll be saving money on top of it.
That could possibly come up if we have our public hearings.
Only, only a portion pertaining to that. Clarify if you would, Mr. Crizell. The water bans that are in effect, are they offering water from the lake? And they have a volume issue getting to their communities? It's not, I, I just want to clarify the difference.
And point taken, this is, yes, and we did talk about that. And I, and I remember that very clearly. And, you know, and DJ was able to clarify that.
Right. But it's a more conscientious aspect of it.
Yeah, and not saying, saving water or inflowing influx or however you say, or if there's a storm or whatever. But it just might help the folks with that $3 thing right off the bat, you know, if they're more conscious and, you know, helping save it themselves.
Mr. Crizell, your thoughts?
It will, yeah, it will jump up 20 cents per thousand. Typical billing is anywhere between $8,000 and $15,000. So, you can do the, the, you know, 20 cents math on a typical resident for a two-month bill. It's not that substantial, but it, it will help our infrastructure. And I will get you the ordinance. We currently have one already in place that's dated a later date, older year. That kind of pertains to what you were talking about with ordinance, pertaining to when you can use water. Yeah, and it is structured like that. And we may want to review that when we touch into the water rates. You can read it, you can review it and get your input on that. And, but just as you see fit. Again, it is a revenue source and it does bring in our most revenue. To say that it doesn't make money, it does make money for the municipality. We want to keep it. It's just because there has been a lack of the maintenance. It's going to really start to cost us in the future. And so, we need to set up, to get this clear, we need to set this up now to get us on board. A lot of the stuff that I have been doing, trustee Pop alluded to with the valve exercising program. We haven't done one in 10 years. And the valves are the mainline valves that run under our streets right now that we have to isolate when we have main breaks. And currently, right now, there's eight valves under previous predecessors that had been broken and then shut up, been shut off and never fixed, that we know of. An exercise valve program will give us directions to which valves. It'll help me plan better to be able to say which ones need to be fixed. And then when we do have a break, we can keep the block or the area throttled down enough to be able to do the repair and to not have to affect a larger core people with a water issue. That's first and foremost. Because we're trying to be more proactive, it is going to cost us more to run that department. But it's because we haven't done it. So, there is revenue in there from the years of doing this. Plenty of money to cover infrastructure repairs. We're running a SCADA system that actually gets us all this data. That's about eight years old, hasn't been upgraded. And it's a PC-based system. We won't get into that topic. But it's a, it needs an overhaul, to say the least. So, that all contributes to the monies that we're going to need to put into our water infrastructure. We all know that we have a 1950 Cervet water tower that sits right in the middle of our town that holds about two swimming pools up in the air, 50,000 gallons. That's going to need to be replaced. That costs money. I would love to see if this town have another well. So, in the event we do have a welfare, like trustee Pop said, where that well goes down, it doesn't leave our municipality with one well dependent to, to hold us until that well gets put back online. Which usually, when you do that, you have to apply for EPA permits. You have to get the well tested, so on and so forth. At first time, it can be down for upwards around a month. So, these are all future infrastructure things that we're going to need to do. It's an investment in our infrastructure, and this is the start.
For the record, can you, do you know offhand how many water main breaks we had in 13 and then in this year?
I can provide you that information. I do not have that one here.
Can you give me a ballpark for how much? I mean, but, yeah, just this past.
Just this past winter, we had seven main breaks, which was, we weathered the storm pretty good. I'm not, I'm not going to complain. The ground's still falling. And that's usually typically when you see the earth shifting and, and these breaks erupt. Again, you know, I usually hate talking about them, but we fared this winter pretty well. And, yeah, and I would like to thank that maybe because of the, the increased flushing program, the treatment of the water, the better sequestration of the iron in our chemical treatment has kind of helped with that breaks. But again, we're dealing with infrastructure that's 50-plus years old in some of the older parts of town. And all the mains that broke, I can tell you, were all the old six-inch water mains that they do not use in the industry anymore. They use eight-inch and up. So, it's the older pipes that are breaking. It's not any of the newer ones. And more of the unimproved roads, so.
DJ, we talked the other day, actually, Ruben and I talked the other day about the possibility of grant monies and applying for grants. Any idea of what the possibility, are there going to be any more permission on it?
As far as grant money goes, you really don't get a lot of grant money for infrastructure water repairs. What they do do is they offer EPA loans that are way lower than bond rate loans, last time I checked. And this was about a month ago. They're at 1.999 for the loan right now to help with infrastructure repairs that you can do over a 20-year period. But right now, currently, there's not a lot of grant money to be able to use infrastructure repairs currently. We are working with our engineers. That is always first and foremost when a grant comes along, to always try to piggyback a project on a grant. But just currently, right now, the way Illinois and the Fed works, best thing that we can do is plan for the worst, hope for the best when we come to construction time. And actually try to do that, take advantage of the EPA loans. There'll be packages that Ruben and I will present in the future along with whichever trustee decides they want to get involved. I know trustee Pop was involved with this. Future upgrades that we need and what it may cost. We can leave that at a later date to discuss. I'll, we definitely would like to take advantage of the EPA loans right now because it's never been lower and it's only going to get higher.
That was my second question. You actually answered it. We talked about EPA loans and bonds, so that, okay, thank you.
So, again, to close, to summarize, we will prepare this so that it's a better piece of information for you guys to look over. And we will get it to you. I believe we've presented a public hearing on the matter, not this, not next week.
No, next week.
Next week. We'll make sure we have that information to you ahead of time so that you guys can review it. And it'll be presentable for the public.
Oh, yeah, it'll be brought in, Pop.
We'll try to get a little more clean up in an ordinance. We'll try to get a little more clean up in an ordinance type form for Friday.
Norbert, you got a question?
Yeah, for the public meeting, I think it'd be helpful if you took like an eight-thousand-dollar bill, eight-thousand gallon bill, and say, my guidance is three dollars and eighty cents more for the two months, you know, so people get confused with, I'm raising base three and I'm raising this seven percent, this, you know, what's my bill? You know, so you can hear that, I think that'll knock out a lot of questions in this area.
And that is a great point, and we actually had done that with some of the residents, and we figured the averages using random homes from the base water bills to a family of two to a family of four, and we have the calculations for that, a water user that uses four, I believe we have one that was right around the seven, eight, and then one about twelve or fourteen, just so that they could see that difference, and, you know, we've adapted the information, so it's not, anyone can read it, so that's not a problem, that will be presented, so that is a good point.
So, pertaining to the rate that you're recommending, and you're talking about a perpetual increment each year, just to address that, it would be reasonable also that if we can get this agreed upon, where the amounts are, that it would be effective with the next, not the one we just got, but the next cycle? Because that's also when the trash rate is gonna increase, what, fifty cents or something like that?
Sixty-two cents.
Sixty-two cents.
July first, I believe.
Only because of the reading we've talked about.
I believe it's July first is when the garbage rate increase goes in, and we will be doing meter reads at the end of, we just did them for the end of April, we'll do them again at the end of June, so the effective bills, if we increase it, won't go into effect until the reads that we're doing at the end of August. That bill cycle covering July first to July and August, that bill cycle, we'll see the monies come in at the end of August, if we're gonna start the rate increase, you know, July first.
Right. For the bill that goes out, the next bill that goes out?
The next bill would cover the bills for May and June, because we're currently, residents are currently paying the bills for...
No, I understand, but that's also, isn't that also when the, Daryl, what's the trash rate actually?
Trash goes up, let me see, is that June first? July first?
So, we just want to make sure they coincide, so that whatever we do is on the one, just to minimize the amount of phone calls that are coming in, so people understand, there's two things that are applied over water rate and the previously contracted garbage rate, so that when you get one call, they can deal with two issues at one time instead of not a whole onslaught of calls two months in a row.
It's totally up to you, but if you do that, keep in mind that residents using water currently right now would pay when they get their July bills, and we haven't technically raised the rate, so. Because we'll do, we'll do the read at the end of June, so in all fairness, if we institute a July first, that's when we'll start paying, but that's totally at the risk.
So, there, any water increase will show up until the end of August?
August bill, we'll do the reads in August, September first, I'd love to say everybody will have their bill in their mailbox, and that's when they'll see the effects of that rate increase, as well as the garbage increase, because we don't bill garbage separately. So, that first bill in September is when we'll see the garbage and the water.
Just need to make sure they coincide, that's all.
They will coincide, correct, if we, as we do it now.
Do you all feel the same way, that you'd like to have it to minimize the disruption to the staff and the phone calls, so we can coincide the two together? Whatever, we'll confirm when that bill will actually impact us for the trash, if we can do that at the same time. And then, I know on the sewer, and this is all water related, but on the sewer bill, I just want to make sure we're all aware of this. So, the sewer bill that we pass on per usage, per gallons, is not taking into account the things that we have to do to maintain our own internal infrastructure for the sewer lines and such like that, or testing, we have to deal with, or repairs or anything else. Correct? We're just asking the bill for...
Correct, but I'm not ready to present that information at this point, as this, as you know, the board passed us to be able to do well testing, our system testing for our sanitary, where we have the meters out, we've jetted the sewer lines that we needed to jet to be able to use this meter system, and then we can visit that, that's a separate issue altogether.
Understood, I just want to make sure the board's aware of the fact that this is pertaining to the water rate itself, based on consumers being affected by it.
Freshwater.
But the, there is additional, when we look at the budget for the water department, you're gonna see items on there pertaining to the sanitary aspect of that, that those numbers don't add up either, that we have an issue with, that, so, we're actually taking a loss on the sanitary issue as well. I know DJ's working on trying to find out exactly how to get that mechanism narrowed down, but we need to be aware we're taking a loss in that area as well, because what Aqua charges us, we pass directly through without anything else to come with any of the other services that go into supporting that, so.
Such as lift stations and infrastructure maintenance. We pass along to the consumer exactly what Aqua charges us. As a municipality, we don't step on it at all, so, other municipalities in reviewing the sanitary, and again, I'm not ready to present this, but they usually have some kind of fees associated with that. We do have fees associated with that currently, but it's not being billed correctly, and that's a separate issue altogether. That is, is something that we'll have to visit, it was never, not to any fault by anybody, it was just when it got set up in Locust, it wasn't configured correctly, so the bills were never billed correctly.
Do we intend, and we're asking you or Daryl, do we intend to correct that when all the other things are put into place correctly? At least the correct implementation in Locust, if Locust is gonna be capable of doing the new rates, should we also do the correction to the sewer portion of that at the same time? Or the C cap or whatever?
Yeah, we'll have to amend the ordinance if we want to keep it the same, as we're charging now, and we'll work on the new rate, if that's what we're gonna do, my opinion only. But if we adjust it to the way the ordinance reads now, it will bring that minimum bill up by about another thirteen dollars and eighty cents, and I don't know if we're ready to do that to the consumer at this point.
But that's based on current ordinance?
That's the way the current ordinance is ready, correct, sir.
When I look at the sewer rate though, it looks like we're pretty high compared to the other communities. Are you missing something there?
That is a sewer rate based on the first four thousand gallons on the minimum bill that you see, and then we charge three fifty-five per thousand, I believe it is, or three seventy per thousand, I'm not looking at the bill right in front of me, that is exactly what Aqua charges us per thousand.
The other villages are charging, in a lot of cases, half that. Any idea why?
Again, I'm not ready to present the sanitary aspect of it, but as far as the way they do, because they may have treatment plants, I'm not exactly sure how they're structured, I haven't got into it, because I know, I have the raw numbers that I know what Aqua charges, and we're under a twenty-year contract with them, that was just signed, I have to base our fees on what we get charged for our wastewater, because we do not have a treatment plant. So, how, a lot of other people, and I know Crete do not have treatment plants, but their water goes to the Thorn Creek Basin system, and that's a separate system, they may have separate charges or a lower charge per thousand than Aqua does, as we know Aqua can charge, you know, what they want.
Or they could be making it up somewhere else.
Exactly, and their water delivery system is how they make that.
But isn't, Mr. Grisell, was there a Crete that actually has an extra add-on fee as well for their sanitary?
Yeah, and again, you know, this is, this, I hate to give you guys a lot of information here on this, other than the fact of, as the bills come out from other municipalities, and I'm not sure if you were given the beacher bills, or were they, you guys were given all that information, I had presented when we had our roundtable meeting about it, a lot of their minimum bills are a lot higher, and when you look on it, and I'm just using beachers as an example, their minimum bill is a hundred dollars right now for a minimum bill, they have a lot of other things tagged on to their, whether it's lift station maintenance, a ten-dollar charge, they charge two dollars per resident for mosquito abatement, they charge a lot of other things that ramp up that minimum bill, that cover a lot of the maintenance and the repairs.
Crete's got a nine-dollar minimum charge.
Correct. But they have other charges in their billing that don't reflect in this, in this bill right here. And there's been requests to people that live in those areas to give me some copies, so that we can see a true minimum bill, I like to see all the little add-ons. I have Crete's ordinance of this, one that pertains to that, but I really would like to see, as Norbert pointed out, the final product when it gets to the mailbox, to see where are all the hidden, because they could have different minimum bills pertaining to that. So, we do, Mr. Batista and I have contacts in with people that live in the surrounding areas to get minimum bills. We've already seen a minimum bill come in from Mantino, and that was a lot higher, so, you know, once we get them all back in, we'll be able to present you guys with that information when it touches the sanitary aspect of it, and you can see how we can change that bill to reflect, not necessarily water delivery charges, but if we want to institute higher maintenance fees to be able to take care of the infrastructure, the lift stations, just the maintenance of it, to where that money will only be allocated for the maintenance and not for the actual cost to supply the water. And that's all I use my fees based on, is the cost, the cost to make raw water, there's nothing else padded in there in that cost, it's just what it takes us to make that water, so.
So, you're, you're referring to the capital improvement in maintenance?
The C cap in them is actually the sanitary aspect of it, it doesn't touch any of the water of it, end of it, that's all pertaining to the sanitary ordinance.
One last, I'd like to address, it's also in the water bill, just going back to this, the trash contract that we have, again, there's no processing charges or anything else that we deal with on any of that, some communities, we don't have that information here, but we'll add a quarter or something like that per month, and Daryl, you were talking about that, because even the processing, some of the, some of these bills, let's say for instance, on the west side of fifty-seven, a lot of the residents who live there, for instance, they don't actually water their sewer, and again, we're passing a direct rate based on what we get from Allied, but there's not anything to process, the cost of the postage or anything else pertaining to the, to the handling of that, the administrative side of that. So, that's something else we should be aware of, and if that's a period that the board would desire, that can also be improved by simply putting, what'd you say, Daryl, order to...
At least the...
Just to cover the cost of it, so we can add on to the, just that way, because otherwise we're actually losing money on trash as well. So, just something to think about, I mean, there's already, it's our rate schedule pertaining to trash, but, you know, an ordered process, that it's a, it's a overall benefit to the community, but again, we're taking a lesson in that as well.
We've already discussed a way to be able to track as residents come and go, because we can notify the garbage company to save that cost every time we know a house gets empty, they don't need garbage pickup, if we don't notify the trash company, they're gonna bill us based on the last known amount of residents, and we lose money that way too. So, we're already in the works of trying to be able to lock down, you know, as all departments unify inside here to have a better flow of information, to be able to report levels on a faster basis, so that we don't get hit with that either.
What is the board's preference on that? Do we want to have a sample illustration of, what'd you say, what's the cost, about twenty-five cents per month or something like that, Daryl, is what yours, you just want? Would the board entertain that, to have that as an administrative cost to the trash? I just, I just want to know, so if you guys put together a sample, what it would look like before and after, so you can address that.
Well, I'd like to just more time than a little bit.
Understood.
I'll get it out, I'll get it out of us right now.
Just something else to think about, though. We, we're not necessarily in this as a for-profit entity, we're also not intending to take a loss in order to provide services to the consumers. So, and frankly, just as an aside, though, if they were, if the entire infrastructure, everything else was handed over to, say, Aqua, you look at other communities that have a third-party provider, not the municipality providing services, and you look at those comparative rates, then you'd be significantly higher, is that correct, Mr. Grisell?
It is, and I know that was settled with Allied when we originally did our contract, because of the savings and what they could provide for us with picking up yard waste as part of service fees.
Okay. So, at this point, between yourself and Mr. Batista, you're going to present?
Check your boxes Friday, and if you'd like, we can try to shoot the sample email to your work email addresses, so you can't make it in or leave, just on a rough sketch of what we're proposing to do in ordinance form on the water rate increase, where you guys can have a little more information.
And Mr. Smolowkin suggests, maybe we could actually show, you know, if we got the three samples?
Exactly, that'll be...
Before and after on all three of them, where we can mock it up and show what the effect that we have on an average.
We can do that, that's not a problem. Any other questions?
Okay.
Thank you for your... Want to go? Thank you, I know it was a long one. And trustee Pop, I know for you as well, it's been something you've been aware of, and I appreciate you staying with it and following it through and keeping us accountable. Thank you. If we can, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to bypass the finances, but I know that it can be an ongoing issue, and I want to address a couple other things. So, some topic came up regarding bonds, EPA loans, and Mr. Kachowski is gonna give a brief summary of, to help everybody understand how all that works.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this brief. Villages have the right to issue several types of different bonds for financing. In our situation, the village has the right to what they, what they classify as general obligation bonds. What a GL bond is, is basically the village backs the payment with what we call a full faith and credit of the village. Bonds are issued for primarily a couple reasons, one for water infrastructure, or two, public improvements. Village being home rule, you don't have to go off of referendum, you have the right to issue bonds, there's no debt. That, if you're not a, if you're a non-home rule unit, there's certain debt you could incur. In this situation, you have the right to issue bonds without going off the referendum. It's gotta be for a public purpose, bonds will usually take, depending on your rating, ninety to hundred-and-twenty days to obtain. Once you have that money, you have a certain period of time to spend it, and an underwriter will come in and they'll indicate what you're gonna use those funds for. The board, we have to have an idea of what you're gonna use that money for, and like I said before, you have a certain amount of time to spend that money. The rates now, I'm doing one now on what we call a revenue bond, strictly revenue, the rates, depends on our, our financial statements, about three to three-and-a-half percent ballpark, you get your money about a hundred-and-twenty days. The thing to remember, though, when you issue general obligation bonds, that affects your levy. The way it's paid back is through your tax levy. So, you know, that does a potential increase in the real estate taxes. With a revenue bond, unfortunately, we don't have the revenue, because that's just dedicated from the one project, you don't have that money available. So, the village would be, if you were gonna issue bonds, which can be done, again, three to four months, you would have a increase of your, potential increase in real estate tax, because that's the guarantee to the underwriter or to your bond buyers, that that's how you get paid back. You've issued, not you, I should say the village, I think the last issue that we had was nineteen ninety-nine, when we issued revenue bonds with a GL backing for the first TIP project, and that's why it's always so important we bait those taxes in the last quarter, otherwise your levy would go up. Other than that, I don't think we've issued bonds in a long period of time. The village is, again, your home rule, which was adopted, what, twenty, twenty-five years ago, you don't have to go off of referendum, an underwriter would take a look at the financial statements, take a look at your profit-loss statement, and, you know... statement, and probably give you an idea how it would take. But they will, they will ask what you're going to do with those funds? How do you know these funds are, that the budget's correct? They'll ask if the bonds are going to be insured. But again, if you just say allocate, let's say you start June 1st, you could probably have your money by September 30th.
So this is for the revenue bond or the GL?
GL. Revenue bonds, revenue bonds are usually for like hotel revenue, sales tax, which you don't have, water revenue bonds. Other than that, most villages would issue general obligation bonds, because that's a full faith and credit. With a revenue bond, you can tell the bondholder, the only recourse they have is through that one source of revenue. Bondholders don't like that. They want to make sure that no matter what happens, that bill's going to be paid by the village's money. So that's why they like GL bonds, because the village is liable. So you've got to increase the levy to pay that tax, or the debt service every year. If you don't, then you're in default.
The process for, if you deal with a GL bond, in the process of implementing the levy associated with that, that is a mechanism we would have through an ordinance and all those sort of things.
Yes, sir. You would pass a bond ordinance, you would work every year then, the bond ordinance would have so much for debt service for 2014 Series A bonds. The bondholder and the underwriter will make sure that the bondholder just passed. Again, if you don't, you're in default. If you're in default, that will affect your credit and any type of potential bond issues in the future.
And how long does the bond issue for? How many years?
Usually 20. Now, you can get 20-year bonds, and if you negotiate with a lender, strike that, the underwriter, you can say 20-year bonds, some callable, and what they call 10 years. It's like a prepayment on a mortgage.
Is there a fine for prepayment?
Well, it depends. You can negotiate, say, we want some of them callable within a certain time and null. Otherwise, yeah, there's a, you can't call the bonds due. You can refund some of the bonds, but if the board ever wants to, I've worked with a few underwriters on very large bond issues, they'd be wanting to come and explain the process. No fees. And then they'll give you a better explanation, a shorter scenario, how it works. But, and then you've got a GL bond, you don't have a reserve fund, but you do need, they might ask for insurance, which helps your rating. But again, with being a home rule, that helps you tremendously. Because if you're a non-home rule, like some villages around here, you've got to get referendum, and you've got to know what the fund is for.
And then will, if we do issue bonds over the 20 years, will our rating go down, or should we have, you know, required additional?
Credit rating?
No, as long as you maintain, it's like a credit card, basically, as long as you make those payments, you're fine. And depends honestly, they'll start looking at your population. You know, are you growing? Or what's your source of revenue? They, I mean, they're so particulars. I've heard situations where another village I've worked with, we do water revenue bonds about $10 million a year. We were told we've got to diversify our income. So they will look, what's your source of income? Trust me. They'll ask, what's your potential growth? Do you have a comprehensive plan? What happens if this occurs? They're very thorough, extremely thorough.
And so then I guess it begs the question, this is probably pretty pursuant to a very other long conversation, then if we're going to, this needs to be made public, it has to be for public use, and it must be for infrastructure. Are we looking at a plan already that we need to ask for these levies and bonds?
Not specifically. There's been discussions pertaining to the potential need for water tower and things like that, and those would be EPA loan. And that's a different discussion that Mr. Crisell brought up. But if we're talking about the fact that we have roads that have not really been, DJ, you want to address some of the concerns on, some of our infrastructure, the roads in some of the subdivisions, even Eagle Fair or whatever else, there's some of these roads that are literally crumbling, and...
And I get all that, I just wanted to know, because if we need a comprehensive plan, and we need to have, you know, what the plan is to spend this money, we better be darn clear, you know, before we even ask for it, that we have a plan in place.
Yeah, that'll be in place first, before we do that. It'll have to be, they'll require that.
If I remember correctly, IRS rules, I think you've got three years to spend that money. If not, IRS, I'm knocking on your door.
And then how big of a bond must be issued to?
I've seen them a million, I've worked on some that are 30 million. So it all depends really on their, you try to, there'll be about a 10% fudge factor, I guess, but you're going to work based on their budget. So if DJ and Ruben come back and say it's $3.5 million, you tell your underwriter you need $3.5 million for infrastructure. He or she will then tell you, basically, the ballpark would be add 10 to 12% on that, you're looking at about a $4 million bond issue. I'm just saying, whatever, I want some insurance will cost, if we get insurance on the bonds, cost of issuance is about 7%. So they'll be working off DJ and Ruben's plans, I guess. And when they do issue bonds, you'll issue what they call an official statement. And in the official statement, you'll tell the bondholders, we're going to spend the money A, B, and C. That's why it's so important that when we make that decision, you've got to do A, B, and C.
That's how, and if I may say, that's how, if you may remember, I believe it was last year, maybe even end of 2012, where we discussed Eagle Fair, Ridgeland, South of Bronz improvement, Sunset, to, yeah, to say the least, as far as road improvements, that was estimated back then at about 1.2 million. So if we try to put together a plan, we will put together a plan, to where, as trustee or as attorney Krizelski had said, a one, three, or one, two, three-year plan, be able to map that out, so that as residents have concerns with their roads and the infrastructure, this year we'll be doing this phase, this year we'll be doing this phase, that year will be the final phase. And it'll be better outlined and more of a visual for everybody to see, and as the new website's loading, you can have all that document data right there. So if a resident has a concern about when their road will be fixed or improved, it's bumpy, yep, it's in this month right here, or this year right here, you can see that. That'll all be part of the plan before it ever gets to the bond stage. As we know, and again, you have to kind of work magic between the two bonds and how they work. Before we put a road in, we want to make sure that the water main's intact. We don't want to tear up a new road before we do that. So there's a lot of maneuvering that you have to do to make sure that everything's okay. In some cases, if a water main runs underneath a section of road, or down the center of the road, let's just say, for instance, that has to be replaced, sometimes the EPA loan can cover the repair of that road. So they work hand to hand, you just have to make sure, as you do your improvements, you really have the plan. You've been formulating that plan for the last year, and with the severity of this winter, we'll have to reassess the roads. Some other things have come to light on that, more roads have crumbled faster than we're expected this year from the severity of the winter. And then we'll have that plan in place and be able to tell you approximately about what we'll need to bond out. It'll be a better figure. We haven't gone that far yet.
I think the South Elmwood does a pretty good job of helping the community know what their one-year, two-year, three-year layout's going to be, so that they can say, my road is in bad condition, but at least they can look at the plan and identify, you know, where they're at on the time table.
Having a plan is the key, and we're trying to, you know, it's never been set up before, and I've been an advocate of trying to do that, to be able to stick to that guideline, now with the new website, and some of the talkings that we've had with infrastructure repairs, and how we want to, you know, GIS map, do a comprehensive water study, do our development plan, where trustee Olson, you know, asked to, you know, set aside $X million dollars to be able to develop our community. These all work in harmony when they're pointed forward, be able to get that data out, that information out. And it's a great tool to use for business residents, everything, they can see exactly what's going on. Usually when a call comes from somebody that wants to move in, or build, or put a business in, all this information, the faster we can get into them, it looks more enticing. And nine times out of 10, they do Google where that place is, just to see if they have their act together. So it's good to have that in line first, before you do that.
So let me ask this, you know, back to the turn, thank you, Mr. Crisell. So the bond is what you were just talking about, each of the GL or revenue, more likely than not, we're starting with GL bonds, because you're going to have an actual source of revenue. The, as a result, you get a levy, I'm just kind of reviewing, so we're all in the same picture, as long as you can get an automatic levy, that has to be implemented. If you go with the EPA loan, as Mr. Crisell indicated, what would the process be for the board in that regard?
The EPA loan, more likely than not, they'll ask you, meaning the village, to sign a loan agreement. And in the loan agreement, I haven't seen the terms, but they'll indicate, it's like a mortgage on a house, they'll say, you're going to owe us $X million over a certain period of time. I don't believe it would indicate an increase in levy, but it would indicate that the village would be responsible for that payment.
And is that more of a balloon-type scenario, or is it more of a, they expect payments periodically?
Usually, if it's intergovernmental, it's usually year by year, not too many balloon payments.
So in all reality, if you go with the EPA loan, you still are likely to implement a levy to match the offset for that?
Not necessarily, Your Honor, as long as there's money allocated every year for that budget, in the budget for that payment. How we pay for it, I don't think EPA is going to care, as long as they know that check's going to be there every year, but...
But it is a likely consideration, though.
It's, yeah, somehow they're going to say, prove you're going to make that payment. Compared to a bondholder, they're very, very strict. When you give the government, as long as that money's there, that's one thing, a bondholder, they're going to say, show us how you're going to pay it.
You see, excuse me, do you see situations where other villages might have a, back to the point, I think, Mr. Pop, many few minutes ago, the surcharge on the water bill or utility bill, let's say for example, where you identify that particular loan, and you note that that's what it begins, that's what that payment's for?
I think in our review, we saw some of those, didn't we?
Correct, yeah. To answer your question, that fund, when it comes in, and Darrell can kind of confirm this, we, and I've talked to Darrell, to make sure that funds are where they're supposed to go. When we take that bill, when that fund comes in, whatever that, I don't know, just use C cap and M is used for, is it going to the sanitary? Is it paid specifically for this? So if we do ever institute an EPA payback, or $10 per bill, or something along those lines, to help fund it, and I'm just using that as a hypothetical, that revenue coming in for that particular line item will be put into that special account to be able to use to pay that loan as the notes do. And that's usually how it's structured, just like garbage is put into that garbage contract, and then pulled to pay our garbage bill when that comes. It's the wastewater, that money's set aside, and then pulled to pay the Aqua bills. And then the water aspect of it, the money that comes up for that is used to pay for water treatment, infrastructure, and everything else that dictates rates for the residents.
Anything else?
I just want to say that I couldn't be happier to see us discussing this by getting it out in the open. It could become a painful thing, but it's so necessary. If we're talking about just for a number, borrowing four or five million dollars, we'll probably save three million in the long run if we do it now, because things are going to get worse. They're not going to get better. Heaven forbid we need our water tower to collapse, then we're really in trouble, if you say that. I mean, economic development, trustee Olson, I wouldn't want to drive someone down Virgin Lamb and say, look what we've got for you. Here's your road. Not just me yelling.
And keep in mind, trustee Pop, with that, a typical water tower has to go out of service for interior cleaning, roughly between 15, 17 years. We just had ours cleaned for the first time last year, where I was able to ascertain the condition of the interior, that should be every couple of years, just so that you can develop your plan, make sure that you know when it needs to go down. And currently, based off of that data, we're looking at about five years that that tower's going to have to go.
DJ, soon, you can go to the mic to like, hear your team. Because residents get to hear that, that's good stuff. Thank you.
As trustee Pop was stating, with the water tower, not so much collapsing, but the fact that a water tower typically needs to be taken out of service anywhere between 15, 17 years for interior cleaning. And our tower internally was cleaned for the first time last year, was about 10 years old. Based on that data, we see that we have about a five-year window. I'm not going to clean it this year, but I'm going to clean it next year, and I'll be able to use the two-year span as the gauge point to be able to see exactly the change in the interior tower. But in five years, let's plan on it, having to go out of service to have the interior cleaned, and some other improvements done to it than it's been needing, that broke right when it wanted to service. But with that being said, it does not leave us any redundancy built into our water system currently, right now. And I'm pretty sure the fire protection district will have a fit, if they know that we are on our 50,000 ampere tower, if it's still in place. So, you know, as we stated with EPA loans, it takes about a year for an EPA loan process to work. You have to submit your plan in, how much money, get the applications, go through the whole process, file your permitting, and then roughly about another year and a half or so to build one. And that is all based on your comprehensive plan, your comprehensive water study, how you figure your future growth, and as well as any land that you may need to acquire to build that tower or drill that well. You know, it doesn't happen overnight, so, you know, the board can say, let's build a tower today, and it's not going to happen for another two and a half, three years. So it takes time, we need to plan accordingly now, to be able to plan for that.
Any more questions on that? I'm just going down through these, and knocking a few of them off. Item H, we had posted, but it's going to be deferred, because we don't have a budget that's been approved at this point for public consumption, I should say. So item H, the May 14th, 5:30 PM, public carryover budget, that will not take place. The 6 o'clock meeting on that same date for the water discussion will take place. Do we want to address item I? Are we, Mr. Batista, do you want to have any discussion on that, or you want to defer that until perhaps executive session?
We can do that.
Mr. Krizelski, is it okay for that to be excluded to executive session?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Okay. And I don't believe that would be, I think it would require action, necessarily, it's just a... Item J, and then that has to do with the fact that I was approached by Brian Kahn, the proprietor of Brian's Place, and also the host for the American Legion Post. As you're all are aware, that the gaming board, I guess it is what's the state regulation for the gaming board, has very stringent concerns pertaining to anybody that's implemented in video gaming. And oftentimes, people won't realize this, but there are requirements, state level, they push down to the county, et cetera, pertaining to raffles. Seems like everybody and their brother has a cause in the running of raffles, foot the pot, or drawing for this or that, or whatever. Legally, they're supposed to have a permit for that. We all know about all the raffles that go on and all that stuff, and it's not my goal to necessarily try to get a piece of that, or whatever else. We were asked by a local establishment to help him out in this situation, and that is, he frequently hosts fundraisers and such for local causes, and there's one coming up, I believe, not this weekend, but the following, that has to do with, because they're going to have a raffle, they're going to have some sort of drawings or whatever else. And to the best of my knowledge, until we do a little more research on it, I identified to him that he should reach out to the county exec, because what I've been told previously was, the county exec's office handles raffle permits for the entire county. Based on the conversation Mr. Kahn had with the county exec's office, they determined that they only deal with the unincorporated areas of the county for those permits, much likely to deal with building permits. So he asked us if we would consider implementing an ordinance similar... So he asked us if we would consider implementing an ordinance similar, and there's one attached in your packet, similar to what Mantino has implemented, because they have a sports club, and so I'm sure they do a lot of raffles in such an area as well. So he asked us to consider implementing an ordinance so that he can adhere to the stipulations and regulations imposed by him, so he doesn't lose his gaming capability in his establishment. So he's very guarded, wants to make sure he's doing these and doing them right, and still facilitating the fact that a lot of people use these for good causes. And so he asked us to consider passing an ordinance of some sort, similar to Mantino as an example. And I believe the county, again, Larry helped me out on this, other towns that do this, but I believe the county, they have a different rate based on the amount of pot, you know, the payout, it's going to be a different payout, then there's going to be an escalating, you know, amount based on that. I'm not so concerned about that personally, you know. Ideally, these are all to celebrate good causes, I believe. The state, as well as Mantino, on theirs indicated that it has to be a non-for-profit or, you know, some sort of a charitable type of scenario anyhow. I just need to know what the board's wishes are on this, because it's a piece of legislation there, in your packet included the state statute, as well as an example in other towns. So Larry, go ahead and...
If I may, or I'm just, it's under the raffles act, I'm not sure the board's got a copy of this, but like the mayor indicated, there are certain criteria wherein the governing body of the municipality may authorize the sale of raffle chances within the borders of the municipality. And then it also indicates the governing body of the county may authorize the sale of raffle chances only in those areas which are both within the borders of the county and outside the borders of any municipality. But they also indicate, they set forth the rules of how a license should be issued, and the board should go that route, which includes the retail value of all prizes, the maximum retail value of each prize, the maximum prize which may be charged. So there is certain criteria set forth in the state statute, and the village does have the right to issue such an ordinance, and if you want to, you can make it more restrictive. So it's really the board's call on that.
Would there be, and I'm just throwing this out there, would there be a possibility we could implement a policy that no permit is required, and then just by ordinance, say, gaming, as long as it's by a good cause, or whatever, and that's a bad choice?
It does indicate, Your Honor, that the village may, so it's not mandatory, the village has the obligation, sorry, the village has the authority to issue, to draft an ordinance. We can draft it for the board's review and consideration, but this is not, I don't believe it's mandatory, it's a village may.
And again, my concern is, like Mantino, I think they charge 25 or 35 dollars?
25.
And it almost becomes more burdensome to maintain the paperwork on that than the 25 dollars that we bring in for the occasional things. And I'm looking for the board's direction, so maybe we can have the attorney either draft something one way or the other. What do you guys think about this?
Well, I can see two sides of this, truly, the two definitions of raffles. The way this is, is, okay, and I'll say, you know, I'm president of a foundation.
Sure.
If I wanted to come to Moni to have an event, and I'm going to have an auction and a raffle, and then have to, you know, go on top of it to get an application to have my raffle, and we have no idea how much the raffle is going to bring in, I'm not having my event in Moni. On the second side of that, too, when there's another raffle, you know, perhaps like the firemen do, you know, the turkey raffle, or the, you know, like football does, where each player is required to sell 20-something tickets, you know, to help pay for the, to the banquet and things, that who's going to police that, frankly? And I think this is one, and I get it that Mantino is doing it, I think this is one thing that we don't need to stick our nose in, you know, that's just one more thing to police that we shouldn't.
I agree.
Well, that's fine, except for the fact that if we do nothing, there's an automatic requirement that is already there by statute. What we do have the ability to do is make it less restrictive, if I understand correctly, but if you have a raffle at, say, Val Moro or some other place, technically, if you don't have a permit for it, you could be in violation. So I would rather take what you're saying to heart, and I really don't want to create a situation where we have to police it, or have to administer it for something as little as 25 dollars, and that sounds a little bit, the cost of the administering it is more burdensome than the 25 dollars, much like a $5 dog tag is more costly to have to deal with than it is the benefit to get out in many cases. So I'm thinking that if you'd rather not stick your noses in it, we merely pass an ordinance that stipulates there's a no-fee permitting, or if that's possible, or can we draft something that indicates that we waive the requirement to file for a permit and any associated fees that would normally be assessed, can we simply do that?
As high as I believe you can, Your Honor, you just indicate there's no fee assessed from a Moni standpoint with respect to conducting a raffle.
So would that be a reasonable solution for this?
Would they be required still to fill it out village?
I don't think there'd be, I'm saying, I'd rather not have the paperwork in effect of the state.
I agree, I agree, I was trying to clarify that.
But I think you would need to monitor it somehow, so somehow, they get a license in the village, they still have to fill out some of that paperwork from the village's standpoint, probably similar to a, let's say, a housing permit. They'll still have to issue, come in, draw an application, and then the license is issued for that one event. So there's still some interplay between the person conducting the raffle on the village, doesn't mean you have to charge the fee for it.
But then there's a cost.
Well, could we word it into our business licenses, which most of the establishments, obviously, would have business licenses anyhow, could we modify our business license so that anybody who has a business license could be the host of a raffle, and that is their permit also, the business license?
I probably want to recommend that, because this even indicates there are certain times raffles can take place, and I think you would want to separate the raffle from the licensing. Yes, I believe so.
You know, the way I'm reading this state statute is that, as Larry said, we may establish a system for licensing, so...
If we don't, there's a problem. If we don't have a system in place of some sort, then in the situation of Mr. Kahn, he's not going to allow anybody to be in his business holding a raffle, because he's not going to jeopardize his gaming license.
So then I would like to hear from Mr. Kahn and hear and what he, you know, as a business owner and holder of many of these fundraisers, I would love to hear from him to come and ask us what he...
Trustee Gonzalez, I actually talked to him Monday about this. I happen to be his establishment, personally, but in my own. And his concern is, because he does have, he does sponsor a lot of different activities, he doesn't want to have to pay for a permit each time. Now, after I read the ordinance here that was suggested, they're talking about an organization being licensed to conduct raffles. So what he's asking is, and this would make sense, his, for example, Mulligan's also, I think, does some of the same type of things, could be licensed as a business to have raffles, but the requirement here is for them to keep track of it. That's on them, not on us.
Well, that's like the organizations that want to have things there have to come here and apply for the license.
Could, you could do that, but again, it's a cost to us if every time somebody wants to do a raffle at Brian's, they come to us, because then we have to pay for all the paperwork and the clerical work. Might be easier if we can write up something that would allow the business, in this case, there's probably only three or four businesses in town that would conduct raffles in their facility.
But you got other organizations that are based out of Moni, that don't have a physical presence, like baseball, football, different...
That's true. But each one of them, if they come to the village, it's going to be a cost to the village. At 25 dollars, there's nothing more than recouping our cost.
Fair enough.
Right.
Maybe not even doing that.
But I don't see any way they can't register. I mean, that's, the attorney suggested that as well, and what I saw in here initially says somebody has to register.
So what is the best way to resolve this without it being burdensome on everybody? And the minimum, I mean, ideally, you go for the minimalist approach to this, but at the same time, the problem is, is Brian has an event loan, but we consider, he is concerned because he wants to allow them to do what they want to do, but he's not about to jeopardize his gaming license, because that's, you know, very relevant engine for his business. So I'm concerned about helping him, his local business, protect and do the honorable, the right way of going on doing it, but I'm looking for direction for the best way to handle it.
Have you ever heard bingo boards? Anybody here? Bingo boards, cards, the bingo cards?
Sure.
Those are, those are raffles as well, quote unquote.
Sure.
And I think the reason for an ordinance like this is to keep them out, because if you don't, what you'll end up with is virtually anybody can come into town then and have raffles. And if we have a legitimate business, as this indicates, that's been in business for a number of years, this makes it pretty straightforward for them to get a license. Newer organizations would have a little more difficulty, but this is suggesting that you have areas of town where this could be done versus people going door-to-door.
I think the stipulation is like, you have to be in operation for five years or something.
Right, says five years.
I guess. And that's the same thing for just regular, defined bingo, because there's a gaming commission overseas even the bingo. As a matter of fact, when the village did the bingo at Fall Fest last year, legally, we had to find somebody who had a bingo license, and we ended up using the Mantino Sports Club folks to do that.
I mean, the state statute says we have to have a system for the licensing of organizations to operate raffles within the corporate limits of such counties or municipalities. So we'd have to have some type of a system, whether we charge them or not is not particularly important, but you just can't issue a blanket one, I don't see that. I have an issue with it, I think, I think people like Brian, and again, Mulligan says the same thing, there's several places in town that really try to help organizations, SHOOP does something along that line.
Okay, well, then here, I would be on the second page, it says licenses shall be issued only to bona fide religious, charitable, labor, business, fraternal, educational, or veterans organizations that operate without profit to their members.
True.
And have been in existence for a period of five years immediately before making the application, and that's the state statute, that's not an option there, it doesn't appear, Mr. Attorney?
Correct. Ex state statute.
Okay, then, so like Brian's is not a non-for-profit.
But the American Legion Post is.
And the Moni Fringery Foundation, which has not been in business five years, would not qualify even though we technically would have been a...
Sure.
And Moni Fire Protection District is not technically a non-for-profit?
It is, when you look at the volunteer portion of that. Moni Volunteer Fire Department is actually listed with the gaming board, because there, when we look for anybody who had a bingo license, or even the, what do they call it, an event bingo license, I believe it was, the only one in the Moni area that was listed with the gaming board was Moni Volunteer Fire Department. So they actually, their association is actually a non-for-profit that is listed as a possible...
Well, I just mentioned on the, you said this was Mantino's ordinance?
Yes, sir.
Says on item A, licenses may be issued to a bona fide nonprofit business, religious, charitable, labor, fraternal, educational, or veterans organization, but again, it says, which has been in existence continuously for a period of five years, which is in the state statute.
Sure.
Now, that would mean technically, I think the way this usually works is someone like the VFW decides they'll sponsor it, and you have to go through them because they're the one that has the license.
And then last year, we were able to host a softball fundraiser for a young player who was battling brain cancer. They are not a nonprofit, they had raffles, made a ton of money for that player. Under this statute, they would have not been able to hold those raffles.
Actually, under that statute, they were breaking the law.
Exactly.
Yeah.
But that's...
Unless they have a sponsorship, unless there's somebody who sponsors them that qualifies under this. So if, for example, I don't want to use my church, but I will, St. Paul's decided they want to sponsor this, they would qualify to be able to sponsor this, similar to what we call the sponsor host, which is, I mean, you've got to follow the state statute, and the state statute's very clear, it says they have to be in business for five years. It's pretty vague on what a nonprofit business, religious, charitable, or labor, fraternal, educational, or veterans association. So if you, your group, Heidi, for example, is a nonprofit, and it's educational, and it's been in business five years, quote unquote, then it would qualify.
Sure.
Now, the question, I believe you asked, Mr. Mayor, with whether we would charge a fee, I don't see a particular issue for that. The question I would ask is, can you, according to this, you can have a license for a specified number of off-raffles during a period not to exceed one year, so that allows us to do it annually?
Yeah, I think even with the bingo situation, when we were looking at that last fall, they had stipulated you could have a regular license that was good for, you know, once a week, or something of that sort, was the way that they phrase those things. And they also allowed for somebody who has a regular license holder to have what would be like an event thing, it would be, I think, no one, five days or something like that, to do bingo and something like that, that would be more of a, instead of just a once a week where they're allowed to do it, they're allowed to do it for a period of five days. And when we looked into it, we said, well, can the village actually get the, and they said, no, municipalities are prohibited from engaging in gaming.
Absolutely, but I could see a scenario here, for example, where Brian's could, under the VFW license, have a fundraiser every week for a year, as long as they're sponsoring it, and the designated place would be at Brian's. Mulligan's could do the same thing and have one...
Mulligan's couldn't.
If Mulligan's was using a nonprofit organization to do this, or charitable, or whatever.
Sure.
The same thing, or let's say, I used a bad example, let's say Mulligan's got the VFW to do that.
And I'm not sure on the statute there, pretending to this, but I know the bingo, it was designated to a physical location, other than the event.
Yeah, no, I'm suggesting that, it does say, it says, the applicant must specify the areas within the village in which the raffle chances will be sold or issued. Now, again, the time period here in which the raffle chances will be sold, issued, the time of determination of winning chances, et cetera, so you have to post all of that. This is the Mantino ordinance, which I'm sure follows the state ordinance.
Sounds almost identical.
It looks to me like it just follows the state, I mean, it spells it out pretty well. Now, some people may not like that, but if it follows the state, why would we want to reinvent the wheel?
It's safe, that way, in case someone questions the statute, the ordinance, they can say, this is the state statute says.
Absolutely, I with you.
It's a safe way of approaching that.
So what is the, and again, the reason I'm bringing it up is not because I want to stick my nose into it, but because we had a local establishment that's concerned about the video gaming part of his business, and he doesn't want to jeopardize that by allowing somebody to do something that he is ultimately responsible for, that takes place on his property. So, that being said, how does the board want to move on this?
I personally would like to see us take, I know, change the wording for this, but make this the policy, because it's pretty straightforward. He would still have to, and I don't have a problem charging 25 dollars for a one-year license, for an annual license, I mean, that would be our intent, not because of trying to make 25 dollars, but because it's a nominal fee. And if you're not one of these organizations, you can't do it legally. How the police department, you know, handles that is their problem, but, you know, that's not any different than what we've been doing all these years.
Right.
He's asking, he's made the legitimate request to make it legitimate, I respect that, I think it would be good to have an ordinance on the books.
Sure. Anybody else?
I think we probably have to bring this up at the next meeting, we can't do this tonight, we don't have it anywhere. But I would suggest, I would suggest we write an ordinance followed after the Mantino one. Prepare an ordinance.
That sounds good.
You need a motion for that, or?
Not necessarily, just wants my consensus.
Consensus?
Trustee Pop, you agree with that? Trustee Razor? Trustee Gonzalez?
I'm still aren't against about this one, I guess, this is something I need to think of. You have your consensus, but I'm not sticking my two cents worth in it anymore.
I'm just not sure what else we can do other than being compliant with the state law.
If we didn't have to do anything, and be able to keep doing it, and doing it legal or otherwise, that's on them and the state, or the county, or whatever, who have jurisdiction if we don't implement it. But it's just like other programs, like EMO, if we don't implement any EMO, then we're dependent upon the county, or the state, or the federal, as compared to having any say, or more lenient or more stringent considerations on that. So I guess in that regard, Larry, did you take the...
Quick question for Trustee Gonzalez, is you concerned the fee?
No, the fee itself, I just think that... No, not the fee itself. I just think that we're policing an awful lot as part of this village. And I know we're the legislative part, and that's what we need to be doing. But I think this is something that our General Assembly has stated, it's under, it says very clearly that this part of, you know, it falls under the gaming license. And it says what the gamers and the gaming establishment need to do to meet these guidelines. So I don't think us as a municipality, again, my humble opinion, is something that we need to have on books. And it's not the twenty-five dollar fee. It's just an added thing that an organization needs to make sure that they follow the rules and money.
So let me ask the question. In the meantime, if Brian decides he wants to do this in two weeks, is he going to have a problem?
He won't do it. He'll tell the...
Well, I mean, there's currently, as Trusty Gonzalez has said, there's nothing on the books right now, so there's not an issue with the village, is there?
Brian Jared told me he won't do it. He won't jeopardize his gaming license to help on a good cause.
So the issue is his gaming license.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, is this the first time that, no, he's been doing fundraisers and not, you know, for years and years.
The video gaming.
The gaming license.
But as a year old, he's certainly been doing fundraisers this year.
Well, it's been brought to his attention. So he's being told by the video game. I'm sure what happens is, is awareness comes up on these things. Somebody comes in from the gaming board to check in on him and say, "Oh, I saw you're having a raffle for something." And they're like, "You're not supposed to do that." I'm theorizing, of course, but you're not supposed to do that without having proper permitting for that, and you could jeopardize it. So, and the notices you're going out to these guys, everybody who runs one of his establishments are being told, "If you hold a raffle, if you hold whatever, you've got to do it the right way."
How many establishments do we have that have gaming licenses?
Mike?
I have.
Maryland's, how did you say, movement, Brian?
Village Jim.
Village Jim, and there's the truck stop there.
Truck stop.
I think mine.
Who?
The truck stop.
Yeah, truck stop's around there, I trust him. They go ahead.
If I could just add, the state police here on the gaming portion enforcement of it, the office is out of Timmy Park, the officers are now, now that there's a unit that's in place in the last eighteen months or so, they are now proactive. And so they are meeting these establishment owners, and they're making sure that they're up to code, up to speed, and understand everything that has to do with gaming. So they are offering instruction, they're handing out literature, and making sure that the public is well informed. So this is going to be an ongoing issue until we resolve it, or...
Thank you. All right, so Mr. Rizik, you know, I'm putting something together that's, and then I guess mainly wanted to make sure I picked up ready to facilitate whatever we need to track on our side. I don't know, is that maybe we have to create something that they can hang there?
How many do you mean?
Like a business license, a liquor license, if we need another. Thank you. It's going to cost more than twenty-five dollars. So, okay, all right.
And I want to work baseball and football and fire department that this is covering, too.
Sure. I know that the fire department's already got, they're technically the nonprofit that get all the, and have been in existence for no longer than we've been here. But as far as baseball and football, I'm not sure if they're five-one-C-three. I'm not sure if the stipulation indicates that they're not-for-profit, or they're actually incorporated, or I'm not sure if it stipulates that, can we...
It just indicates non-for-profit. I don't think it says five-one-one-C.
Okay. All right. Do we want to go back to the finances, or do we want to address the executive session briefly, and then come back and deal with finances? I don't intend a motion to go to executive session.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Raisik and Horton, go ahead, please.
Trustee Horton?
Yes.
Holst?
Yes.
Yes.
Raisik?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
If I could have Mr. Batista and Mr. Crizell Jones.